All right, it's the time that was noticed and posted for our work session. This is Tuesday, April the sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and it's eleven o'clock A M. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, busy. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh two H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and we'll begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby, issue.
District two Supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judge is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference I D four two three, two one six, one two eight pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions as always should be as you, before you speak, you should tell us who you are, who you represent, so we have a complete record of this, um, this meeting. Mister Karwatska, our county administrator, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the, um, county budget for the county school superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Supervisor Judge, Supervisor Crosby. We're here to, uh, review and listen to our school superintendent, Jackie Clay. So I'm gonna pass it over. That, that's how quickly it is.
Wow, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I'm going to quickly, quickly brief you on our operating budget review and also, um, a quick, um, review on our new Crossroads Academy, which is by A R S. We have to talk about once a year, and that will be very quickly, talk maybe five minutes. These are the things I'll be talking about. Madam Chair, something I did learn from you, you said anything that we do, we have to have A R S buy it, and I'm gonna be showing you a slide that has that. But these are some of the things that, um, we are responsible for, not limited to. But we have, um, the fifty-foot view, fifty thousand-foot view on the account, on the county, and the schools, um, the jails, the detention center, even homeschool and private school. We are service to them, and we are there to help them move forward. We're here, here to serve, support, and fill in the gaps. And being on the, um, State Board of Education also helps me with that mission. This is our, um, organizational chart. We've grown somewhat due to some of the grants that we received. And as you can see, we have a behavioral health team, um, which has been very, um, helpful with the county. We've had a lot of students, a good amount of students, either suicide, murder, um, drug overdose, accidental death, et cetera, et cetera. We are in the process of helping these schools get through the grief, also the community, um, also, um, providing training for the, um, community, the students, the teachers, um, and working with other organizations that have to do behave with behavioral health and mental health.
Before you move from that one, could you, do you only have one person who has anything to do with accounting in your office?
Yes, Madam Chair. At one time before I got here, um, it was three, and then two were taken away. I would, I would say that it is very hard doing twenty-one reconciliations with one person, but we only have one, ma'am. Which means that we're always behind on recon because we have.
So you're administrative manager, no one else does any of the accounting except that one person for all the districts?
Absolutely. Well, we have, um, our, um, deputy, she, she comes and helps. And then we have our, um, we have one other person who helps, but the accountant is the one who's supposed to be doing all that stuff.
But how can one do that and do true oversight? Looks to me like that's one of your primary responsibilities, to make sure those twenty-one school districts that don't have the resources to do it themselves.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I remember the first two years I was here, I asked for an additional person, and because, I guess because of, um, what was going on in the county, I was denied.
But didn't you have three at the time?
No, that was before, before I, um, became superintendent, there were three. When I became superintendent, there was one. So I, I would, I would suppose if we look at the history, somewhere before me, those two positions were taken from the county superintendents. And we've been struggling ever since.
Uh, we have a question. Who keeps track of teen suicides?
That would be, um, collectively, we have, we're working with the county health department, we're helping with psychologists at the, um, jail and our behavior health team. We're starting to work on collectively to keep that information. But as far as who, actually whose job it is, it's not our job to do that, but we are trying to get all that information. And this helps us with our grants and other things that we're doing to help the, um, challenges we're having in our county, especially in the whole areas.
So in the past, up till now, there is no accurate tracking teen suicides?
There is no, um, not, not in my office, no. But this is something with our emergency response team, crisis team, because we had, um, the grant for the behavioral health and mental health, these are some of the things that we're doing right now. There was nothing in place before, and there's nothing in statute, as you can see, that we're supposed to do that, but we fill in the gaps. Whatever is needed, that's what we do.
That's something that catches my attention very much, like veteran suicides.
Okay, um, we don't, we don't track the adult suicides.
I understand.
Something important to him, just like.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And again, we're working with the health department and, um, the sheriff's department. We've just started, we've just started, which is going to be, it's going to be a great collaboration.
And if I may, uh, there is an accurate tracking, it just collectively, you know, getting all that information, so you know what the, the teen suicide rates throughout the whole county is, that's what they're starting. But in each jurisdiction, they know.
Yes, we, they're the place we can go to get that, but as you're saying, that's not by statute what we do, but we know where to get the information from when we need it.
What, what were you talking about in, in regard to jurisdictions?
So for, for instance, if I could give an example, uh, if something happens at Sierra Vista, the Sierra Vista School District, that the Sierra Vista School District.
I don't see any Sierra Vista jurisdictions.
Right, and so, but not necessarily new to be, uh, informed or, or impacted, where I think the focus going forward is that collective communication.
Absolutely.
So that everyone's on board, and then hopefully next year, when you ask that question, you'll, you would have that answer.
Yes.
That's what I was saying, is there is someone tracking it, it just, there's no such, yeah, there's no centralized database.
I think the health department always has a database on it, so if you're interested in those memories, I think you'd find that in the health department.
We could.
Well, that's from when they come.
Oh, really? I'll be, I'll be followed by Ms. Nikki Madden.
So this is the, the revenue that we have generated over the past five years in Indred House, which is a very small percentage that we charge school district, school districts for managing their grants. So, uh, we're always a year behind. For twenty-two, twenty-three, we collected one hundred eighty-one thousand, fifty-five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Next. And this is where we are, um, for our current budget year, we're in twenty-three, twenty-four. As of March thirty-first, uh, we had spent three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and one dollars of our five hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollar budget. Um, and we have, you know, we've stayed under budget every year. And this is the amount that you're requesting for this year, no any from last year, other than any cost of living that we graciously offer us. Okay, I've got a question, just want, as I request.
Is there a simple answer to why your actual in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-one is so much higher than it was in twenty-two, twenty-two?
No. I would have to look into that. I'm not sure if.
You, you made the statement that we took away people, and I don't remember us ever taking away people. You may have repurposed them in your office, but I don't remember taking away.
No, ma'am. Um, when I first became, um, superintendent, I had asked, why do we only have one problem? And I was told, um, that those positions were taken. It was before I got here.
But my question is, the actual in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two is much higher, a hundred thousand dollars higher than twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four? Is there a simple explanation for that? That was my question.
We would have to go ahead and look and see what, what projects we're doing, we're probably doing project, et cetera, that we can get back with you.
I, I kind of have a similar question. It looks like you're not spending as much the last two years as you did the years before. You can see that, like, there's that extra hundred and something thousand dollars in there. It's almost like you have money for a person. That's what I'm thinking, in my mind.
We'll have to take a look and, and see for sure.
I mean, it's okay, I can really, you're visiting for a purpose, and you know what it is, but I don't exactly know. But would you look at it? We can go ahead and, and get back with you on that. Thank you.
Well, your budget is over five hundred thousand from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, and you're asking for that now. And your actual for this year is three fifty-one. So I guess that's our concern is, well, why is there that big gap between actually what you're spending and the budget that you asked, or was approved for last year?
We will go ahead and check into that. I would say that, um.
And we are gonna have three more months of salaries and everything coming out, because this was as of March thirty-first. So we'll still have April, May, and June, and we, um, having out of that twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
District, uh, excuse me, what were you gonna point out to me regarding the pie charts from last year's budget and the page we're looking at?
Oh, that's, that, what, what's included on the spring documentation is only, uh, budgeted numbers, does not include the actual.
Wanted everybody to be able to think of them.
We have, we have been very sparse in what we're doing because of some of the things that were happening. We also had a jail, we have a person who works at the jail, and right now she is not working, and we have somebody else in place right now. So that salary right there, we haven't been spending any money on that salary too. He's been very, very sick.
Madam Clay, do you have a place in the jail to do education?
Yes, we do. We do. We have, um, we have right now approximately six students there, and we also are working on our adult education, which we should be working, which we should really start putting in a place soon. But yes, we have to ensure that those students have the same education and opportunities that all other students have. We have to test them, um, and give them the special needs, things that they need, which means we have to hire psychologists outside. Um, we have to hire speech therapists, we have to hire all the same people, um, by contractor, when we have any special needs students.
In the jail?
Yes, in the jail.
In anything. Well, I know what you're saying. I think it's neat, I've been here a few times, but I think it's wonderful, more than neat, wonderful, how you've expanded to include, to really fulfill your, fulfill your obligations, but in a very positive, like, even, even, um, getting the community involved, things that are costing you extra, but you're, you're really making a big difference.
I think what we're trying to do is to lower the cost for the county and go out and get grants, and we collaborate with other organizations.
Well, obviously, you're, well, your, your organizational chart is in my mind. A lot of that is grant funded. I mean, you, you, you're, you're a big organization, and all we're paying for is that, well, that affection.
Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of cool.
I hope it's appreciated.
It is. But thank you. It's appreciated. Thank you, Jackie. And everyone else.
Madam Clay, you talked about adults, and in your interaction with adults, I see on this page here, the, uh, the age limit that I see here is age twenty-two. So is that the oldest adults that you deal with?
Well, we get to that, that's in the Crossroads Academy, that's our dropout accommodation school, which is different from the jail. So we, we get into that in a few minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Those are two separate things, two separate, um, demographics there, two separate projects. Okay, so I hope, I will get into that, right? These are our overall goals for twenty-four, twenty-five, and, um, all of them, if you look at everything, they correlate with the statute. We are still, I call ourselves a baby E S A, educational service agency, which is what we are. Um, and these are some of the things we're working on. The big thing right now is our emergency crisis response team, which we have, we're collaborating with just about all behavioral health organizations in the, um, county and their representatives in the school, and our security, people in security in all the schools, so that we can ensure that, um, our students are safe, but at the same time, do preventive maintenance to stop anything from going on that may cause an incident to happen. We're not doing that by ourselves, we're doing that collectively with everyone in the county. Firemen, police officers, border patrol, um, security guards, um, everyone is part of that, um, emergency response team.
Madam Clay, what is that, uh, top right, the inhaler program for you?
County Stock and Inhaler Program. That program was, um, instituted by, um, Governor Ducey, where he said he would like stock inhalers in every school, and these are students who have asthma. A lot of them don't have the money, um, to have the inhalers at home, so we ensure, and a lot of times we have students who stop, don't go to school because they get sick, and they have to go home. And then they go home, a lot of times they don't have them. And we did have a death of a student who had a very bad asthma attack. Um, she, um, lost oxygen for around five, five minutes, she became just about brain dead, and she died, um, ten months later, and that was one of my relatives within the county. Okay, she had a, and it was because she, and that has been near and dear to my heart. But we, um, that is a collaborative program. We have one doctor, he signs all of the scripts for everyone in the school, and we're in partnership with the University of Arizona. So we ensure that there's stock inhalers in all the schools. We, we have the money, we pay for that, okay, through grants and through other collaborations, so that's in the school for free. Um, nurses have to train, so we provide the training for them. We usually do that before school, school year, so they're ready for things like that. But, so that is basically the county Stock and Inhaler Project.
Do you know if that requires a nurse to administer such?
A nurse, we have nurses in all the schools, and they are, they're the ones who are trained.
I see. Is that, uh, include, do you know if it includes so-called Epi pens, which are similar?
The Epi pens, we're working, because that was such a big load for us, and with my small staff, we partner, we're partnering with the, um, health department, and the health department is getting all that and all the Epi pens, and they're doing that side of the, um, house, as far as the Epi pens.
Thank you.
Yes.
How many, um, students are at the Pinnell County Detention Center that you work with?
Right now, we have seven students.
Is that, you're written, is that one point in time we had one?
We've always had, I would say, we've always had ten, five to ten students there. The problem, the, the challenge we're having at the detention center is, and, um, we're working on it, I G A with them, they sent it to me, and I said, I'm not gonna sign it because we need better procedures on what happens when a student is released from Pinnell. When they were here, when they were released, we either put them back in their mother, their, their school, or they came into our accommodation school. But now, they come back, and we don't know where they're at, and the services that they would have received in Pinnell County, now they have to change who they had services with, and then we have to find out, find somebody to have services here. But the thing is, we don't know where they're at, we don't know when they come back, okay? We lost, we lose sight of that, so we're trying to get some sort of agreement with them to say that any time you release a student, we need to know where they're at, because they're coming back, and they're not receiving the services, or they're not going back into the schools. So, um, we're gonna work that out, and, um, in fact, this week.
Yeah, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, it's been the past, I think, forty days, there has been an increase in the amount that we've had in the Detention Center.
Yes.
Where currently, I think we do have seven.
You saw it, no?
Correct. Um, so there's, uh, it, it only has been recently, and I think the longest one was forty days. So just roughly over a month, the numbers have increased.
Anything in particular that we can point to that caused in the last?
I haven't had an, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the juvenile courts to see what causes the increase in, uh, the length of stay, that be a guess right now, but I can find out that information and report back to the board.
Okay, what county, what county entity should be tracking juveniles released from Pinnell County for the rest of the juvenile system, juvenile justice system?
The, the juvenile court should keep track of who's being released.
I see.
Because they're the ones that would be releasing them.
Okay. So there is, there needs to be better coordination, it sounds like, between the education side and the juvenile justice side?
Yes.
I would say that, um, when the students were taken away from us, there was nothing in the I G A that had to do with the two, um, county.
Coordinations.
Yes. But that's what we're fixing it.
Okay. In what way are you fixing?
We're having a meeting, and we're, before we sign, before we bring the I G A here, we're going to talk about procedures on how, what's gonna happen when that student is released. I need to know when they're released.
Is the Board of Supervisors expected to look at that?
When we finish this.
You know when that might be?
Um, maybe in two or three weeks.
Okay.
Okay, we still have to sit down and figure out the best procedures and the best strategy for it, with best for the student.
Thank you.
Are you responsible for students that are transferred to another county, or just, I mean, like, if their home is here, do you track them throughout their journey? You might know why I'm asking, but that's a personal.
Statute, when, when they were taken from us, everything was taken from us, all responsibility, or everything went to Pinnell County.
So the only time you are responsible, again, is when they are in the borders of Cochise County?
I'm, I'm not responsible for them at all, if you go by statute. But because of our love for our students, those are our students, and we're not gonna just have them go somewhere and then not know what's going on with them. So we try to track them. That's not in any statute, that's to me, I call that the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law is that the superintendent of schools take care of their students.
But the court, the juvenile court in the county does know where they are at all times.
Yes.
So that almost seems like a.
But when they're released.
Oh, when they're.
That's, that's, that's the problem. You have to realize, when they're released, where are they going? That's, that's, that's not a responsibility of anyone, that's the spirit of the law, because we love. Where are you, where are you at, and what type of services do you need? That's my concern with those students.
Because at seventeen years old, they might just be like, forget it, I'm, there's no way, I don't wanna have anything to do with school anymore, I'm just, I'm outta here.
And there was one that was committed and then released, okay, by statute. I, I don't have to find them, but I'm a mother, right? I'm saying, and when you send them to Pinnell County, and their parents don't have enough money even to go and visit them, they're up there on their own. Okay, so, um, I guess because I'm a mother, I want to make sure they're gonna be okay.
Well, that seems like you can work that out, work it out.
We are, but we, we're, we're, we're working it out. We have some really good people who will have any.
Okay, let's look at the crossroads now.
Yes, ma'am. Really quickly. We were established in twenty-twenty-one, and this is our April twenty-twenty-four update. Our vision is the same, we want them to rise like a phoenix, and we will provide motivation, direction, purpose, and opportunity. The word opportunity came from our advisors, they said, Jackie, yes, motivation, direction, and purpose is great, but what about the opportunity? Are you working with the community to ensure that they have opportunity to be successful? And that answer is yes, we don't do that on our own, we do that in collaboration with our community. And the reason why I am giving this briefing is because the A R S says that we should, we have to give presentation to Board of Supervisors once a year, on basically an update of what we do. And this is our mission. New Crossroads is different from the jail. New Crossroads is a, a, um, project that our office decided to take on because of the opportunity youth. Opportunity youth, um, in Cochise County is seventeen percent, it should be lower than seven. So this is something, again, filling the gaps. When you talk about the jail, the jail is a total different animal, we have, not having, totally different, um, organization. With the jail, by statute, um, I am responsible for jail education for students, for juveniles. Um, by statute, I am not responsible for adult education, but because of the spirit of the law, and because we have our teachers who are, um, certified in G E D testing and, um, G E D education. And when we have, we call those students category-three students in the jail. So our category threes are adult education. If we don't have that many students in the jail, then we pull in our adult education, our older, um, students or older inmates, and we start preparing for G E D. But New Crossroads is for the whole county. This is for sixteen- to twenty-two-year-olds who have dropped out of school. Some of these, and these students are not the students we have to chase after. These students are the students where the light bulb has gone off. They said, miss, we messed up, and we want to change our trajectory, can you help us out? We don't want a G E D, we want a regular diploma, so this school, this Cochise County Accommodation School, number zero one zero one. It is not a charter school, it is an actual school that it took us eighteen months to, um, get on board with, uh, the Department of Education, so we're an actual school. We're an online school, and it will call, considered a dropout recovery accommodation school under statute. And that's one of our students. What happens is we take our vehicle, and we will go and visit them. This student is in Douglas. When, um, because sometime they can't come to us, so I'll show you the vehicle we have that we're getting ready to put computers in, where we go actually visit students, see how they're doing, et cetera. These are.
Excuse me, when you said you're gonna collaborate with the community with, with this program, or is that a different program you were thinking?
New Crossroads, they, um, the high school, the accommodation school is, is, is community, um, supported.
Okay, how so?
Well, you have our advisory boards members here, okay? We have meetings with them, we tell them, um, what we're doing, what the status is, we talk to them about, um, the grades, the grade levels, um, what our challenges are. They're the ones who help us with our, um, satellite campuses. We have satellite campuses throughout the county, satellite campuses, for example, um, the American Southwest Credit Union, they said, Jackie, here's a space for your students, if they don't want to go home, because a lot of them have kids and responsibilities, they can come to the credit union, here's their room. If they need any tutoring, we will be here to tutor them. Okay, so we have, um, different organizations throughout the county who have provided spaces for these kids in different areas.
Is that what it primarily is, uh, uh, giving spaces?
The, um, when you talk about satellite campuses.
No, I was talking about community collaboration.
That's one of them, yes. Um, the other one is when we were, um, creating our learning space for, um, our students, the community helped us with that. They helped us, um, create the space, they helped us as far as planning the space. So the thing is, we have our advisory board members, we tell them what we're doing, and they're the ones who give us advice. Jackie, have you done this? Have you gone to talk to, um, this organization about jobs? Or hey, we have some, um, internship opportunities for your students, or listen. Internship opportunities for your students. Or listen, we need to go to Cochise College to make sure this happens, etc. So the thing is, it's not just my um, office doing this. This is a definite one hundred percent collaborative effort with our community. Because we want to keep our students in Cochise County instead of exporting them. So the community helps us. Provide the motivation, purpose, and validation of our students, especially our opportunity youth.
Oh, what kind of return opportunity shops are you talking?
Any, any, the thing is, anybody, any um, business. Who says, hey, I have opportunities, will let us know and we give opportunity to those students. So that changes by, you know, time to time, whatever opportunities out there. But the thing is, we tell our businesses that um. We have to keep our students, and you have to help us keep them by providing these opportunities.
Basically, they're um, they're hiring them, you know, at hours that we're getting paying them.
They can hire them, or they can train them on whatever they've, the, the, I think the biggest thing, especially for our economy in Cochise County. To stop them from leaving. I tell the community, to stop our kids from going away. Okay, by export, from exporting them, we have to create a community for them. We have to validate them. And that's not just teacher responsibility, school responsibility. Okay, that's the responsibility of our community. And if we do not provide a venue for them to do it, then they won't do it. So this is one of the things that we do. We provide a venue for the community to feel that they're a part of us moving westward. And feel that they're a part of our community, or, or our economic plan in our community, so that we can become successful. So we are into people helping and not being part of the problem or complaining. These are people who are helping us move forward. So these, these are people who are part of the problem, not part of, they are part of the solution and not part of the problem. They're very, very, very. proactive. Questions? These are projected number of students at, at our accommodation school. I am proud to say that we have seven students in our um, jail. So our jail students are in New Crossroads. Okay, in Cochise County, overall, we have thirty. In the state, we have three hundred and forty-five. You might wonder why we have so many statewide. It's because throughout the state, they understand that New Crossroads creates a culture of community. These students are not just numbers. We look at a dashboard, we look at who's logging on, who's, who's not logging on. Do we have to go to their homes? Do we have to call them? Do we have to get with the mentors? Are they being abused? Do they need behavior or mental health? So they know that we um, they're on our radar, not only from um, the mentors, but we also have community members. If they have a satellite campus, if they have students going there, then you have another um. Um, another group that's actually helping the student. So it's the teacher, it's the mentors, it's us. And it's also the community, helping our students. So the three forty-five. That's why we have the vehicles. We have a vehicle. We'll show you that.
Are they, a lot of the regional, like, um, Stafford and, and maybe Pinoina, or a lot of them kind of regional.
We, we're all. Pinnell, up in Maricopa. I think our biggest, our biggest challenge is the ones who are special needs. We have to get to them and make sure they have services. Those special needs students we have in Cochise County, they're not a problem because they're right here, okay? But the ones that are not in the county, are the ones that we um, those are our challenges, but we take care of them. So our students aren't a number. We love all of them, no matter where they're at. And once they complete three courses, um, we get them into Cochise College. CTE programs, and that is the um, the welding, the auto, mechanics. The CNA, the coding, uh, phlebotomy, anything, any of those entry-level jobs or any of those. CTE programs, because again, it's not about them getting a diploma. It's about our economy. And it's about giving them purpose, so that when they finish, they will have some sort of certification. Just wanted to let you know, these are how many, we have three hundred and seventy-five students, two hundred and two seniors, one hundred. Junior, sixty-seven sophomores and six freshmen. And if you remember the back of um. The building in four zero zero one foothills, that is how it looks right now. If you please. Feel free to come back there. We spent a lot of money getting the place set up, but this is our students' learning environment here. We wanted the New Crossroads students to have a place of their own, a place they can call home. So this is their learning space. We have one big pergola and we have three gazebo's. And then we have the plants with the bats that come through, and, and we have science projects and um. There's a lot of cool things back there. But online students, we want to, we wanted to create a culture of community. Where they would have their own place, and that, and that New Crossroads would be a place where they want to graduate from, that they feel proud to graduate. So far, since twenty twenty-one, we've graduated ninety-four states. And um, the lady right there, that's Miss Wendy Conger, she is the Assistant Superintendent of the New Crossroads. I think Wendy is from Wilcox. And she's all over the place. Um, these are some of the services that we're going to be giving next year. This is um, our principal, um, Ben Reyna. He has what you call um, coffee with the principal. He goes to the different cafes throughout the county. He meets with the students and he um, gives counseling services, because they don't have time to, to go to counseling. So we, we go to them. So these are some of the things that um, we're doing with them. To create technical education opportunities, our virtual open house, in-person and virtual. Um, mobile testing services. We have to test our students by, by statute. So we go to them. Sometime they go to uh, come to us, but a lot of the time we go to them. These are the two vehicles we have. We have a car. Um, and we also have a vehicle that was um, donated to us by Freeport Met.
Hey, Maureen?
I can never say, yeah, them. They are amazing. And that, that ambulance was all white and, you know, it's, and, and. It looked like an ambulance, but now that is our mobile ad. And of course, when we're not using the mobile ad, which costs, takes a lot of gas, we have our car.
You're more than a, you're more than a, a charter school, but you're funded like a charter school from the state, like it's a special.
No, we're not funding. Okay, we're funded like a regular public, public.
Like a public school, okay.
So all of the hoops that public schools have you jumped through?
That's why you're reporting to us.
We have, but it's worth it. It's worth it, ladies and gentlemen, for these kids. It's worth it.
And I think, didn't they say that it was the first new school district?
Since nineteen eighty-five. It took, it took eighteen months of red tape to get through. And all I can say is that I hope people appreciate what we're doing, and they can see the good in what we're doing. And what we're trying to accomplish with our students.
Did you say you had ninety-four graduates?
We've graduated ninety-four students from um, when we opened in twenty twenty-one to now.
Career Technical Addict, notice Joel Todd was on, on the list. Do they sometimes use the? The J-Tech programs are in, in their regular?
We partner, we are partnering with.
But they lived in Douglas, could they go to the Douglas program at the high?
Not the high school, the college, which is better.
Yeah, the college is fine, but.
Because you, you gotta realize, that's a different, that's a different entity, okay?
In Stafford, my daughter was in the beauty school, and she was in, enrolled in EAC. But the high school is also enrolled at the beauty school at the same time.
Yes.
So sometimes they're combined and.
Sometimes they just.
Okay, so you're not discounting that maybe in a community, the only thing they have is welding at the high school, not a college welding course.
Well, the thing is, because we're a New Crossroads Academy, we don't have our own CTEs.
Right, so you, so you work with the.
We, we work with the. We work with the college and J-Tech.
Okay.
Now, when you talk about CTE in the other state, in the other places, you have two types of campuses in CTE. You have a central campus and you have satellite campuses. When you're very rural like we are, there's satellite campuses. When you're in the city and urban, for example, um, Pima County.
Thank you.
They have four big schools, and then all the high schools gravitate to those schools. So uh, most of the students, they go to school from eight to twelve, and then they go into the, the J-Tech school. From one to six or seven in the evening.
I see those were.
Okay, so that's, that's the difference. It's hard for us. We, I would love.
College, I can't, you know, say a student lives in Wilcox, except for maybe a computer class. They're not gonna get. Welding or woodshop or anything unless they went to the high school campus.
No, unless they went to Cochise College. Douglas or Sierra Vista, or that, we have to work that out.
Yeah, that's an hour and a half trip. I know, because I do it to here. It's a long way.
We're doing the best that we can with the challenges that we have for our students.
I have to say, in our own high school, we're doing the best we can with the challenges. They have their. All right, well, thank you.
Okay, bottom line, you're asking for more money in your budget than you had in your budget last year.
No, ma'am.
You're asking more money than you're gonna be spending. So, for us, simply. What is the difference? What, what are you expecting to fund in this coming year's budget? That you could not fund in this year's budget?
Well, last, well. Training, the training that we, that I did not.
Training for whom?
My staff, especially the finance training. We have not gone to any uh, um. Their finance, they're big finance consortiums, they're very, very expensive. And we're going to have to start sending our people to all the different trainings that we have not been sending.
Or are there any other questions about the budget?
Nope, thank you very much for your response.
Thank you, madam.
Okay, before we end this work session, I need to say that our next work session will be at eleven thirty. In the Board of Supervisors hearing room with the Cochise County Treasurer. So having said that. Eleven forty-two.
It'll be at eleven twenty-two.
It will be immediately following this.
At eleven forty-five.
When I. It's eleven forty-three right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so next one will start at eleven forty-four.